Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilmember DeWor.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Teelander.
Here.
And Mayor Althoff.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes for the preceding meeting?
I'd move that the minutes be approved as they have been submitted.
And I'll second.
Roll call, all, please.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
And Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Accounts payable.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable.
I'll second.
Any questions or concerns? Roll call, all, please.
Councilmember DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Citizens' discussion for items not on the agenda? All business. Dave?
There's no changes. I'm saying another thing, too, is that, excuse me, when we're looking at the new manager coming in, he'll be seeing some changes.
Yes. New business. Mayor Hedges attended the planning commission meeting and do you want to give us a little update on this?
Well, I said that I attended. There was some discussion about the camel that is being proposed and that it would go into a light industrial area and that there are two light industrial areas where such a kind of business would be able to operate. One would be there at the northeast corner of Bowes and Valle Vista. This particular location that the gentleman is looking at setting the dog, what do you call it? A park in, anyway, it was, oh, it's like a bed and breakfast, but a bed and bark, I guess it was. So, but anyway, clever. And it would be just to the east of Whitesbridge Towing there. And then the other area that might be light industrial that would be over here where the old pharmaceutical place is in South Monroe, South Washington. Andy felt that this was a language adjustment to include such a business in the light industrial, that there were, this would come first and then later would come the site plan and what they might be looking at doing specifically. The gentleman, remember the name, anyway, he's looking at perhaps snapping as many as 60 dogs, if that puts it in perspective for us. And he's quite excited, but we have to follow various patterns here to make things work. And one is to first get zoning in place and then look at site plan after that. I think maybe I've covered the light place though.
Okay, thank you. And the planning commission did make a recommendation for us to approve it. I have had a couple people talk to me about it. And there was some concerns, but after we talked a little bit, I remember there was a vet that boarded dogs over there not too long ago and...
Yeah, just a little further to the east, they relocated up near Grand Balute, the...
Grand, Grand, Grand River. So, do we have a motion?
I would move that we approve ordinance 16 dash 03.
I'll second that.
Roll call, all, please. Any discussion anymore? We did that a little bit quick, but, roll call, all, please.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
And Councilmember DeWor?
Yes.
Reds, what about this?
There's still, yeah, I would...
So, you're deferring on that?
Yeah, he was, he did not show, Bob Ryan was not at the last Parks and Rec meeting, so we made no headway on it.
Okay. The oxidation ditch we have worked?
Mark, why don't you give a little update on this?
If I didn't know I was going to be invited to speak, I might have come prepared.
Oh, you, you...
You have in your packet a memo from me, I think. Get outlined, we have work that we'd like to do on the empty oxidation ditch at the wastewater plant. We drained the ditch almost an year and a half ago now. We found several other things that were wrong and we addressed those. And now we're back to square one and ready to do the rehab work we wanted to do in the first place. That includes rehabbing some of the steelwork that's in there, the structure for the rollers, and replacing some of it and painting the fiberglass covers. We had an engineer's estimate of $35,000. We budgeted, the city budgeted $50,000. And bids came in higher than that. Sure, your owner and I have discussed it. Do you feel like we can afford to move forward with the project anyway?
And it's necessary, and it's necessary, too. Pardon me, and it's necessary.
It is necessary. It's necessary work. The steel structure there is 30 years old. We're going to say what we can, but some of it, quite honestly, is better off being replaced than rehabbed. Nothing's falling down, but it's just a matter of time. And only get done with this ditch, probably in the next year or so, switch pitches and do the same thing. And we'll probably have the same challenges to start with cleaning debris out and fixing a broken bath before we get to rehab of the steel again. Questions?
Yeah, we won't know about the next ditch until we open it up, clean it up.
We won't, but we can, our best guess is we're going to find the same conditions. There's no reason not to.
And we'll know what we're dealing with by then as far as costs and everything.
Right. And that one's about 30 years, too, then? Yep.
Yeah, the plan actually, secondary plan started in 1987. So, but then, so we're working annually 30 years.
So, it served us well.
I think a recommendation, too, from Sue Olman is that we have the funds in reserve from wastewater to work on this, so...
Yep, and we have Brad Marison Williams' orders. He put the RFP together for the bits. So, again, questions really technical, perhaps he can speak to that.
I'm responsible for that erroneous estimate. Sorry about that. I didn't think it would cost that much.
Cool, people step up, so I think, yeah. Thank you, Mark.
There's no other discussion. I would move that we approve a little bit of L D ducts at a cost of $18,500.
I'll second.
To carry out these oxidation ditch.
I'll second that.
Roll call, all, please.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
The mayor's annual meeting of officer delegates?
Right, every year, the municipal employees retirement system holds an annual meeting and one of our department heads is requested to attend to keep everybody abreast about what's going on. Chief Bouklet has volunteered to do this and recommend that the council approve him going to the MERS conference.
Any discussion? I'll make a motion to that Lowell City Council appoint Steve Gidla as the employer delegate for the 2016 MERS annual meeting. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? I went to this, and it's a good thing for everyone to go at least once in their, in their time of being an employee at the city. Roll call, all, please.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Resolution 1416, city manager contract with Michael Burns. Dick, would you like to give us a little?
Be happy to, Mayor. Good evening. You have in your agenda packet a copy of the Poison Flaming deal with Michael Burns and by way of background information, you should know that Mayor and I met with Michael a week ago, this past Thursday, to outline the terms and provisions that ultimately made it into the employment contract. I then generated a draft of that agreement and circulated it to Mike so that he could take a look at it. His attorney also took a look at it and circulated it. I think council members have received a couple of drafts. There were some comments that were made, some changes that were made, some provisions. Nothing significant. You'll see all of them in here in a minute. I'll walk through the agreement with you and be happy to answer any questions. And finally, near the end of the week, we were able to come up with this final draft of the agreement, which is an agreement that I recommended, the mayor, I believe, also would recommend the adoption of the resolution approving this agreement. With that, let me just walk, walk you through and highlight some of the provisions of the employment agreement. In section one, on the first page, it indicates under duties and responsibilities that Michael Burns is to be employed full-time as city manager, his full-time position, and that his duties and responsibilities in the second paragraph are those that are set forth in the city charter, the city code of ordinances, and then attachment one, and if you flip to the back, you'll see attachment four, which is a job description of the city manager that has been used in the past. So, this is, it describes in more detail the duties and responsibilities as city manager. The term of his employment is in section two at the bottom of the first page. It's for an indefinite period, but it begins September 6th. And that's all dependent upon you approving this contract this evening because once that's done, Michael needs to give his current employer 30 days notice before he can start here. But the plan is that he would start on September 6th, which is right after Labor Day. Section three, at page, on page two, the first section covers compensation. And I might mention that compensation in the first year has been adjusted for a partial year so that his compensation will run from fiscal year to fiscal year. So, for budgetary purposes, it must make, might get much easier than to keep track of compensation. And so, you can see for the first year, the partial year, it's based on $89,000 a year, but because there's only 298 days remaining in the year, the compensation through June 30th, 2017, will be $72,664 and some change. After that, you can see the compensation for the second and third years, $91,000 in the second year and $94,000 in the third year. And of course, all of that is dependent upon his continued employment because obviously, if his employment doesn't continue in the second and third year, then the salary wouldn't be paid, compensation wouldn't be paid. Thereafter, the agreement provides after the third year that you, as the council or your successors, during part of the evaluation process, will meet with him and reach agreement as to future salaries on a year-by-year basis. Okay? Section four describes the four conditions under which the employment relationship may end. First, he may resign upon giving 30 days' notice at any time. Second, it ends upon, obviously, his death or his retirement disability. Third, the city may terminate his contact, contract without cause. And fourth, the city may terminate his services as city manager for four cause. And four cause importantly is described indeed. It means being charged with a high misdemeanor or felony, a violation of the ICMA Code of Ethics. That's the International City Managers Association. Might be a member of that association, it's a national association. They have their own Code of Ethics that they're obligated to abide by. Or the third reason that the contact, contract can be terminated for cause if there's a breach in the terms and conditions of this agreement. In section five is a discussion on severance pay. Severance pay is only payable if the city were determined to terminate the relationship without cause. And if that would happen, he would be entitled, Mr. Burns would be entitled to six months' salary and continued health care coverage for a six-month period of time. However, if he were to find employment anywhere during that six-month period, any income that he would have, any wages or salaries he would make, would be offset against that six-month salary. And also, if he found out employment elsewhere, the city would no longer be responsible for carrying its health insurance benefits. Section six, performance evaluation, annual goals and objectives. You might have noticed that this is an annual review. However, during the first year, it provides that at the three-month anniversary and the six-month anniversary, the council will meet with him in an informal manner to review and evaluate his performance. So, there'll be a three-month review, a six-month review, and then a review just before you do the budget for the next fiscal year and then annually thereafter, just before you do the budget for the fiscal year. Vacation leave, the section seven, it provides that in the first year, first fiscal year, that's through June 30th, 2017, he's entitled to 12 and a half days. In the second year, 15 days, and in the third, in the third year, 20 days, which is the maximum that employees are entitled to. And thereafter, it would be 20 days or whatever would be set at the time for city employees. Second leave time in section eight, the same as all other employees. The retirement contribution, Mike Oden belongs to mirrors currently. He would, he has the right here to have him actually make contributions towards his mirrors or if he established another pension program, that same contribution could be to another pension program, but the amount would be the same. Professional development, another thing I would bet is pretty common there, common language in there, general language, except I point out that when we met Michael and Kidd, he had already paid for his registration fees and travel and lodging to the International City Managers Annual Conference in Kansas City, which will run from September 25th to 28th. His employer, I should, his current employer, I should say, had paid for that. He felt it wouldn't be fair to have the continued payment for that, so he asked if the city would reimburse it for that. And you can see there that he agreed to do that in an amount not to exceed $1,500. By the way, that leave also, when he's gone for those five business days, would not come against his vacation. Hopefully, on business at that time. A vehicle allowance, vehicle allowance is $475 a month. And by way of reference, that's the same vehicle allowance as Mr. Dumperswood receives from Light and Power. We've added a paragraph, section 15, on residency. The city encourages Mr. Burns to reside within the city limits and Mr. Burns agrees to do so once he finds sort of housing within the city. Until then, he agrees that his residence shall not be more than 20 miles from the city limits. So, Mr. Burns cannot continue to live in the Sterling Heights. And finally, section 16, moving expenses. Cities agree to reimburse him for his moving expenses in an amount not to exceed $3,000 based on the lowest of two estimates that he left to bring to the city. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Everybody's good?
I'm good.
Mayor?
I would move that we approve the resolution authorizing execution of an employment agreement with Michael P. Burns.
I'll second the motion.
Yes, there's no more discussions. Roll call, all, please.
Councilmember DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Mayor, if we have execution copies released, we'll be able to sign this agreement.
Mayor of City Council, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to select me as the city manager here in Lowell. I'm ecstatic about coming here and moving the city forward and taking, continuing the greatness of the city. I don't enjoy negotiating contract, my contract, so I'm glad this is the time. Looking forward to coming aboard on day of Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Advanced metering.
Possible to get that shade or no? All right, well, you all have copies. True. All right, first of all, I want to say congratulations, Michael. It's going to be a fun ride and I think everybody's looking forward to having you here, so congratulations. Just want to thank the council and the city for allowing me to present tonight. I had called Sue a month ago and asked if I could get on the agenda. I would like to, or I was hoping to present on the advanced metering infrastructure project, or otherwise known as the AMI project. There's a lot of, I wouldn't say controversy, but there's been a lot of talk in the United States and around the globe about AMI projects because it's really known as a smart meter type project. And I just wanted to get on the forefront of this project before it's implemented, kind of explain what Lowell Light and Power has done in terms of going forward with the project, the research we've gone through, the analysis we've performed, safety and security specifications, and then answer any questions for anyone. But AMI meter project is really defined as an integrated system of smart meters, communication networks, and data management systems that enables two-way communication between utilities and customers. An AMI system is definitely the meters, but it doesn't really stop there, nor do the benefits stop there. After this system is put in place, sensors, capacitor banks, substation automation, different types of controls can be put on our system to make it more robust and automated. That results in an even bigger financial savings and value to not only the utility, but the residents here. But again, tonight, the outline of the project, outline of my presentation will be the project overview, how the AMI technology works, security and safety specifications, benefits to customers, benefits to Lowell Light and Power, and then a project status update in terms of where things stand right now and what you can expect going forward. So, project overview, really, there are four goals that this project achieves. There's many other things that the project achieves, but I could, these are really four main categories. The first is that this project really will empower customers by providing them a hands-on tool to better monitor, analyze, and control their energy and demand usage. Residential customers are discharged for their energy. Commercial customers, the large ones, are charged for a demand component. And the demand component is their maximum KW or kilowatt that they use in a given month. And right now, when we bill, we can tell customers what their maximum demand was in that billing period. We can't tell them when that maximum demand occurred. With an AMI project, they're going to be able to determine when their maximum demand is happening and they can make changes within their own facility or company with their equipment or their shifts to try to decrease that demand will result in cost savings for not only them, but to Lowell Light and Power. So, that's the demand component and that really just affects large commercial and industrial customers. The second thing this project does is it provides a 21st century method for customers to interact with Lowell Light and Power, the utility. A lot of people are in social media, they like their phones, they like the computer. Right now, we have limited ways for customers to communicate with us in terms of those means. This project will solve that issue. Third goal this solves, it keeps Lowell Light and Power's infrastructure up to date with industry standards. U.S. utilities have actually been installing meters with radios since the 1980s. And in 2014, according to Edison Foundation, over 50 million smart meters were deployed in the United States covering 43% of residences. It's estimated that 58 million meters are installed today. And consumers' energy and DTE project to have 4.4 million of these meters installed in the state of Michigan by 2018. So, this shows that the investor-owned utilities are doing this, our competitors, the surrounding areas, the residents outside of our community have the advantage of having this type of technology. We don't want to fall behind. The fourth goal that this achieves is it improves, it'll allow us to improve our overall system reliability, efficiency, and performance. And we'll get into some more of that information later. So, the start date, or really the research start date of this project actually started in March of 2015, believe it or not, at periodic Lowell Light and Power Board meetings starting last winter. The project had been discussed, vendors had been talked about, cost benefit in terms of what technologies can bring and reoccurring costs to Lowell Light and Power about going with GE versus AT&amp;T versus Eaton Cooper versus Elster. There's a number of different vendors out there, but that type of stuff started last March. Then, in December, I guess you could say there was the, we're really doing this, start date. And this is when the Lowell Light and Power Board gave approval to go forward with the project, again, after months and months of discussing research and analysis. And the completion date is targeted to be September 30th of this year. We had put out a bill stuffer at the end of March and at the expo, we put out a flyer that announced that the project would be happening in the summer of 2016 and the goal was to have that up and running by the end of the summer. And we're currently on track to do so. And I'll get, and I'll provide a little bit more information later in terms of what we can expect to finish off the project. The project was budgeted at $525,000 and we're currently on budget. And we went with Eaton Cooper Power Systems. They're a $24 billion company. They've been around, they know the business. They're actually the Public Power's two-way AMI deployment leader with over 3.5 million AMI network nodes installed and supported and 300-plus two-way AMI systems installed and supported. So, how does the technology work? There are multiple different types of smart meters. We ended up going with a mesh network system. And a mesh network is kind of what it sounds like. It's, the meters talk with one another, they self-form, they self-optimize, and they self-peel. And the simple, we can go through and read all of this, but I don't think it would be productive. for a cellular type of service that could cost $2 or $3 a meter per month, where each meter would go talk to a tower. So that's the type of system that's being installed in Lowell. And again, this is just a larger visual showing that, once the system's up and running, we're able to install other sensors, pieces of equipment in that network that we can control from our Yukon and gateway head-end systems. And the Yukon system can actually interface with our SCADA system that we're just finishing up at Lowell Light and Power, our CIS, Customer Information System, outage management systems, and more. So it really is more than just a metering project. This is just phase one of what we can do. Moving on to security specifications, there's security built in to all node-to-node communications, and Eaton Cooper is industry-leading in their end-to-end security with mutual authentication and derived encryption keys for each node data exchange. This slide is a little busy, but they have encryption and authentication keys between each point, between gateways, between meters, between our CIS system. I have a white paper that, in very complex terms, explains this, but it is a secure system, and they thought things through. Moving on to safety specifications, this is probably why AMI or smart meter technology has gotten the most heat. But before we go into the actual data in terms of the testing of the technology, I just wanted to explain how this device falls in terms of, or who regulates its safety. So the FCC, the United States Federal Communications Commission, is the organization with oversight responsibility for radio frequency safety guidelines. And as specified in FCC 1.1310, devices which emit radio energy must be certified to meet maximum permissible exposure or MPE requirements. And these requirements for the MPE exposure are typically set 50 times lower than the lowest known effects to humans. So, there's this threshold the FCC sets, which is, most of the time, from what I've been given, 50 times lower than what's already safe. A smart meter is an RF device, and because of that, it falls within these FCC exposure limits and regulations. And you might be thinking, okay, are these meters this crazy new type of technology? Not really. Cell phones, Wi-Fi routers, garage door openers, baby monitors, all use RF technology and fall within the same FCC requirements. So this type of technology isn't new, it's all around us, and most people, I think it would be fair to say, have some interaction with RF technology in their daily life. This is just a listing of governmental agency and private academic organizations that have performed health studies in regards to radio frequency AMI meters. You can see there's the World Health Organization, the FCC, the National Cancer Institute, and in all cases, none of them, none of these organizations have found any evidence or factual data showing that AMI meters cause any safety problems or concerns. Okay, so now getting into the actual smart meters and some hands-on information. Smart meters, even at close range with exaggerated duty cycles, and that's really how often the meter is on, are many times less than household devices that are also in complying with FCC limitations. As an example, a person talking on a cellphone compared to a person standing between 3 and 10 feet away from a smart meter, which is operated continuously, which is not the norm, the person standing away from the meter would experience RF exposure 125, 1,250 times less than someone talking on a cellphone. And due to shielding, so a meter sits outside a house, the actual wall of your house shields that RF wave even more, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Again, it's hard to see this slide for the audience, but this shows that talking on your cellphone, there's a range of 1,000 to 5,000 MW per centimeter squared, and MW stands for milliwatts per centimeter. A smart meter, if you stand next to it, one foot away, operating at 50% of the time, is between 5 and 50 times less powerful than an AMI meter. And that's if you're standing next to, outside your house, a meter, which I don't think many people do. If you're standing 3 feet away from a meter, it's between 50 and 500 less times powerful. So this just further validates that AMI technology is not going to hurt or cause harm to anyone. Last, just another graph showing that the actual AMI RF meter is well below the safety specifications. Cooper meter devices operate 1/8 of a second every 20 minutes, and that is that line right left of the 1,000 mark on the very bottom, that third bottom dot. So that's the, that's what the megawatts per centimeter squared is emitting for the meters, and it's well underneath the threshold of the FCC. Any questions so far? Already?
I have one.
Yes.
I was going to ask you about whether it's a constant signal, and I was getting that it was not a constant signal.
Correct.
And then you went into it's 1/8 of a second every 20...
Every 20 minutes.
Every 20 minutes.
That's how often the meters start talking to one another.
That's really, really a small thing, is that just all of a sudden you get a ping that's there, and there's no more signal.
Right.
So that's even more reason for not having concerns about this.
Correct, and it emits a signal of roughly 1 watt.
Okay.
And a microwave, for example, is a couple thousand watts.
Yeah.
So, yes, it does not operate continuously. Customer benefits, and this is really what I feel, people want to know, what are they getting for this? If people can be assured that it's secure, it's safe, we're going about it in the right manner, what are they getting out of it? And really, they're getting something pretty awesome and comparable to almost a Consumers Energy type of platform. And what they'll be able to do is make an account with a smart customer mobile platform and application. It's through smart utility systems. And there will actually be an app on the App Store where people can go in and download this smart customer mobile app, or if people can make an account online, there'll be a platform. And this platform will act almost as a one-stop shop. People will be able to pay their bill, set up reoccurring payments, they'll be able to budget bill, they'll actually be able to say, okay, I don't want to spend more than $150 this month. And the system can calculate their read every day, and it'll say, based on your current usage, you're projected to spend $162.58. And you can get those alerts via text message, email, or just by logging in. So people can consciously see, okay, I might need to make some changes if I only want to spend this much money every month. People can receive an email, they can report and view outages in real time, they'll be able to view energy efficiency tips, and even be able to enter, I have this type of refrigerator, I'd like to go to this type of refrigerator, how much money could I expect to save in the next year by doing this? What are Lowell Light and Power's rebates for doing this type of thing? Or they'll be able to download them or print them right off of this platform. They'll be able to view current and historical bills, they'll be able to compare themselves to previous months, the previous year. There'll be weather data that shows, hey, it's hot, or it was hot this past month. Typically, in the summer, energy usage trends, weather data. It'll save some phone calls to Lowell Light and Power and letting people know that, yes, the weather was hot, because this will map it out for them. And it really just empowers the customer. It gives them a hands-on feel of your energy usage, and there's so many things they can do with this.
Steve, if a customer wants to reduce their bill, and we hear about vampire components in the house, or things that steal the energy, they're just like phone chargers, and the wireless router seems to run all the time, too. Will you be able to offer any help or guidance to the customer to have them be able to lower by trying to figure out where these energies are going or coming from?
Well, they'll be able to determine when they're using their energy by logging on, this hour they're using more than other hours. In terms of specific devices, we don't know what's going on in someone's house. There are areas for us to, I mean, if it would be helpful, this type of device uses this many watts, which costs this much, just so people are aware of what's playing into their electric bill. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
Just if you're open to maybe having in your newsletter suggestions of what might be stealing energy from them, costing them every month more than what they realistically could be spending.
That would be, there is something on this portal where we'll be able to, it's almost like an informational section of the, where we can give tips, or frequently ask questions, or advice. That would be something where we could put on a page like that.
Okay. Yeah, I've been running a computer, I'll constantly run a printer, and I've just gotten rid of that printer, and now I'm running without a computer, it just runs wirelessly. It's taking energy, but not as much as the computer did. So, you know, things like that can, will save my bill.
Right.
Okay.
Hope I'm not forgetting anything. But really, like I said in the beginning, for commercial and industrial customers, this could be a huge saver. I have been approached by multiple industrial and commercial customers the last three, four years, asking how they could trim their demand. And our advice right now is, you know, you could have somebody behind the meter, and you can turn things on and see what happens to the demand on the meter, because the meter only records the highest demand in that period, and every month we reset that. This will allow them to see when their demand and energy is spiking, kind of level out that demand. So this could be a huge saver if industrial and high-end commercial customers take advantage of this. And we're also, with the outages, we're able to alert people of planned or unplanned outages, where people can elect to get a text message or email if their power's out. So that's pretty cool. This is, the next four slides are just screenshots of what the platform will look at or looks like. The first is the usage module. Hard to see, but you can see it's pretty sleek. It shows a bar graph of different months and the energy usage. On the top, you can see that there's, if we ever got to it, there's solar with this, there's electric vehicle cars, or other options we have with this platform. But this is just how, what the interface looks like. Second slide is just the billing module, where they can PDF their bill, or they can view their power bill just line item by line item. The third is just a comparison of what they used last month compared to this month, or last year compared to this year, or they can even compare other people who are using the portal, what the average is in Lowell, the residents who have signed up for this, they can compare them versus the average of the pool. So just something kind of neat. Then the last is an outage module, where it actually takes the Google-type map, and it'll plot an area that's out of power, and people can report outages from this feature as well.
So the app, you can punch something on your app and it will report, or does it automatically report it to you? Will you know?
I believe you will be able to have customers get a text or email if they're out of power, because the meter will show it's out of power, it'll work through the fiber and our gateway, can send out an alert.
But you'll be faster in your response times, too.
We will be.
And less phone calls coming in.
Correct, won't have to worry about that.
Thanks.
We put a consumer's map on there, so we can see all the times that we have power and everybody else doesn't.
Hopefully, the outage map doesn't have to be used, but. Lowell Light and Power benefits, like I mentioned earlier, upgrade aging infrastructure, free up time for staff to work on other projects. Right now, we have two part-time meter readers that will no longer be needed, they've been informed of that. They're both retired and doing this as a second income and more of like a hobby. But throughout the month, we have variance reports, and meter reads, and move-in, move-outs, where we're spending 18 to 25 hours of paid period of man-hours reading meters, where we'll be able to use that time to not hire out contractors or to get other things done of value. It'll decrease our system losses. Customers will potentially see their bills slightly increase. And the reason for that is, the meters that we currently have are old, many of them, and they slow down. We don't expect it will be substantial, but when you factor in Lowell Light and Power's billing $8 to $9 million a year, we could see increases in the tens of thousands in revenues. And that's not substantial, but what that really is saying is that people have been getting a break for what they should have been paying for years. It'll allow us to monitor equipment and voltages across the system, leading to more informed decisions. It'll allow us to size equipment better. It'll improve outage response time, and the projected savings and value of the system per year is $170,000. And as we go forward with additional improvements in sensors and automations and controls, the engineering report that Eaton Cooper provided us show that we could potentially save $371,000 a year, but that involves more work later. So, a lot of benefits to Light and Power to do the project. There are also a couple neat future benefits that I wanted to highlight tonight, and the first of which is time of use rates. Lowell Light and Power pays for energy by the hour. There's an actual portal that Lowell Light and Power has access to, where every day I look at how much energy we bought that hour, how much that energy costs us. Right now, most utilities, including Consumers Energy, people pay, you use 600 kilowatt-hours in a month, you pay for 600. But what'd be cool if we could have a time of use rate, and there is such a thing, where our utility's doing this, where, I'm throwing out an example, between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., the power costs 14 cents. Between 4:00 and midnight, it's 10 cents, and between midnight and 11:00, maybe it's 5 cents. And people can then be billed on when they're actually using the power, so they'll be able to run their dishwasher, do their laundry, charge different devices at different times of the day. That's not only beneficial to them, but beneficial to Light and Power, because we're buying the power for cheaper at that time. We would gladly pass on those savings to customers if we knew when they were using their power. So that's something for the future, it requires collecting data, analyzing data... And as we go forward with additional improvements and sensors and automations and controls, the engineering report that Eaton Cooper provided us show that we could potentially save $371,000 a year. But that involves more work later. So, a lot of benefits to light and power to do the project. There are also a couple neat future benefits that I wanted to highlight tonight. And the first of which is time of use rates. Lowell Light and Power pays for energy by the hour. There's an actual portal that Lowell Light and Power has access to, where every day, I look at how much energy we bought that hour, how much that energy costs us. Right now, most utilities, including Consumers Energy, people pay, you use 600 kilowatt-hours in a month, you pay for 600. But what'd be cool if we could have a time of use rate, and there is such a thing, where our utility's doing this, where, I'm throwing out an example, between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., the power costs 14 cents. Between 4:00 and midnight, it's 10 cents. And between midnight and 11:00, maybe it's 5 cents. And people can then be billed on when they're actually using the power. So they'll be able to run their dishwasher, do their laundry, charge different devices at different times of the day. That's not only beneficial to them, but beneficial to light and power, because we're buying the power for cheaper at that time. We would gladly pass on those savings to customers if we knew when they were using their power. So that's something for the future. It requires collecting data, analyzing data, making some complex rates on the backend that are simple for the customer to understand. You don't want it to be overly complex, and every 15 minutes, the price of power's changing. But that's something you can do. The second, which is prepaid metering. And the idea of prepaid metering is exactly how it sounds. It's really buying the power before you use it. And this isn't how the electric industry has ever worked. It seems like a radical concept, but I think of it as paying for gas. If you want to run your car, you go to the gas station, you buy gas, and you can use your car until your gas runs out. Prepaid metering is an option to do just this with electricity. And I don't have the actual statistics before me, but I was at a Smart Grid Summit last year, and I heard a vendor, I believe they said, people who have prepaid metering actually use 30% less electricity, because psychologically, they know they paid for it, and they'll shut things off or change their habits, because they don't have to wait 30, 45 days to pay a bill. If they know, hey, your account balance is decreasing, they'll do what they can to limit their usage. Again, this is something that one half is not coming with this project right now. Bills will be very similar to how they have been. This is something that AMI technology would allow light and power to do in the future if the board wanted to go back out. Any questions? Project status? Yes?
For people like me that don't have smartphones, and I still write checks to pay my bills, will I still get a bill even though I have a metering thing?
Correct. Everything can remain perfectly status quo. There's no app anyone has to download. There's no computer anybody has to log into. People can get their bills like normal at the end of the month, due on the 20th. No change. So what's been done?
One more, Steve.
Oh.
Actually, it might end up being two questions, but is this installed outside the house? It doesn't go into the equipment?
It's basically replacing the meter that you currently have outside your house with a new meter.
Okay. Will the, so, will it, is it just a smart meter that provides data? Or is it going to be used to control usage by the power company?
No, it's not going to be used to control usage by the power company. You can still do whatever you want within your home, just like normal.
Steve?
Is there a charge to the customers for installing it?
No. No charge to install. And as I'll point out later, this is going to be optional with a $0 opt-out fee. I do have some statistics about how many people generally opt out to a program like this, but we can get into that in just a few minutes.
If somebody opts out, this has been a point of attention, I think, in the beginning, and then the year, two years down the road, their neighbors bragging about how fantastic it is, and they call you and say, we took a smart meter.
They put one in.
There it is. No charge, just come and put it in?
We would put it in. If we did it for somebody at no charge, we would put it in for everyone else at no charge. Typically, an installation shouldn't take longer than five to 10 minutes, actually. It's just swapping it out and keeping the data correct.
Will the meter monitor conditioning of the line, whether there's spikes and valleys?
And voltage?
For your sake, so that you know that maybe there's a transformer problem or something going on?
It can do that, yes.
Steve, do you have a life expectancy on these meters, then? Are they going to last as long as the other ones that we've had, then?
This type of technology, we're really shooting for 15 years. Probably not as long as an other type of meter, but in the return on investment and calculations, this project's paying for itself in three to four years, so it's justifiable in terms of that route.
And they could come up with advanced data as well down the road?
The nice thing about these meters is we can push updates to the meter from the head-end, so if there is any software or firmware updates, those can be sent to the meters directly, and we won't have to go to each meter and change things. Now, if we want to completely redo a setting or change the type of data, I think that might involve going to a meter, but in terms of just typical updates, that can be pushed from the head-end.
When the new meter is installed, will the power be out temporarily?
It will be. It will be. And I'll get to, a lot of what's coming next is right what I'm ready to talk about. So what's been done so far? Billstuffers were sent out at the end of March and June. And Sue, could you flip to the next slide so they can just? This is the billstuffer that was sent out in June with all Light and Power electric bills, explaining project benefits for the customer and the project timeline. So we have sent out two of these communications, the latest of which did mention that there would be a presentation at tonight's council meeting. I plan to take the presentation, or this section of the council meeting, upload it to YouTube, and put it on Lowell Light and Power's website as well, for anybody who would like to watch from home. And we can go back. So billstuffers have been sent out. Three gateways or collectors of the data have been installed around town already, and that happened a couple months ago. Ryan Teachworth, I guess now's a good time to introduce Ryan. Ryan Teachworth is our new distribution transmission manager. He took Tom Russo's position. Tom retired at the end of January. Ryan and his crew were responsible for installing the three gateways. They were installed at the Lowell Light and Power office facility. It's actually in a communications room upstairs, and there's an antenna on top of our building. So if you're on Riverside and look up, you should be able to see an antenna. There's another gateway installed near the fairgrounds, and a third gateway installed at the Light and Power substation. And the reason for these locations are not only because they're strategic in location to collect all the meter data, it just also happens that we have fiber in those locations, which allows us to bring back the data to our Yukon software. Twelve relays or repeaters have been installed around town. If there is a meter, and the next meter is far away, you can install a relay on a pole, and it will kind of act as a signal booster. So 12 relays or repeaters have been installed around town already. They've been installed for weeks. Servers have been installed, networking and communication setup has successfully been completed. And we did install an AMI meter at the Lowell Light and Power office facility, and it's working how it's supposed to. And, I mean, I guess it's not a surprise, but we were just happy that, right away, on the Yukon system, we could see the meter, which means it was going from the meter, the gateway, through our fiber to Yukon, where we could log in and see the data. This was the billstuffer. Oh, next one. Right here is a picture of the antenna and the gateway at the fairgrounds. The gateway is a box, oh, probably about this big, that is attached to a pole, and the antenna, probably three feet tall. Next picture. Second picture is the antenna at the substation, and that's Mark Grohl coming down from the bucket truck. The gateway is actually installed in a building at the substation. Cables just run from the gateway to the antenna. And this picture is just a relay installed on a pole around town. It's, oh, a box, not bigger than this, this large, maybe six by six, Ryan, you say? There's 12 of those installed around town. So what's left to do? Install the meters, obviously, and deploy the smart customer mobile platform and application. The installation of the customer application will take place in two phases. A lot of the basic features will be able to be used right away. The more advanced features involve actually the vendor, because Smart Utility Systems isn't part of Eaton Cooper. They're a vendor that utilizes the AMI technology to present it to customers. Once the meters are installed, they'll be able to integrate and capture that data. So what can people expect next? There will be a letter sent out in late August to all customers that will not be in their normal bill. And this letter will have a timeframe as to when the meters will be changed out, a high-level overview, reiterating the project benefits that were talked about in the two other billstuffers that were sent out earlier. We're going to develop a frequently asked question sheet, and there will be information that if people do not want to, they don't have to participate. Just, the Lowell Light and Power board was pretty adamant on that, and we're a small enough utility that if people are concerned and genuinely don't want that, we can make that happen and not offend anybody. In terms of the opt-out data, though, Austin Energy, a municipal down in Texas, installed 419,000 meters in 2009. Sacramento has their own municipal, and they installed 617,500 meters in 2012. Tallahassee has installed 116,000 meters, again, a municipal. And the Salt River Project in Arizona installed more than 900,000 meters. When you combine all those meters installed between those four municipal utilities, 0.06% of people have opted out, which would equate to 1.6 customers in Lowell. Now, I'm not sure what the data will turn out. Lowell's a smaller town, and people talk and have different concerns, but even in Tallahassee, I think seven people opted out on 116,000 meters. So the genuine, as people get more informed and learn the statistics about the safety and security and the benefits, most people genuinely, or generally do not opt out. So just some information for the council. Finally, on Tuesday, September 6th, four Lowell Light and Power crews of two people age will start the changeout process. We've had two meetings now, the entire staff, talking through how this will work. The expectation is that this could take up to two weeks. We will develop a door hanger that will be hung on each customer's door, letting them know that their meter was changed out, or they can go to find information about the project, benefits to them, or they can find the video, the frequently asked question sheet. So if somebody misses everything we've been sending them, they'll at least get something on their door, so it's completely transparent that this did occur. We're also going to take a picture of the old meter and new meter, and write the address of the location when we're doing each changeout, so we have proof of somebody's final reading, the meter number going into their address. And there's a slide on the next page showing what this will look like. The bottom meter is an actual AMI smart meter that was put at our office building, 127 North Broadway. The top meter is the meter that's being replaced, and it shows the final read. So we will have a picture of every single address in our files, just for record-keeping. And like I mentioned earlier, the release of the Smart Utility Systems, Smart Customer Mobile Platform will be released in the weeks after the installation of the meters. So, again, we're on target to meet that September 30 deadline that we've kind of set ourselves. Are there any questions?
Steve, if somebody wanted to opt out, just give you guys a phone call, so it'll save you the trip, and/or they don't need to be bothered, or if they erroneously received a smart meter, and they didn't want it, they've got to go back and change it again. Is there a method to opt out?
There will be information of how to opt out in the letter that we send out in August. Obviously, my hope is everyone opts in, and I'm never, if somebody's really strong about opting out, no questions asked, that's what we'll do. If somebody is open to having a conversation or would like to learn more, that's the route we're hoping to take, just so they can get the facts, look at the research and analysis that we've been given for the last year, year, year and three months. But there will be information in the letter indicating how someone can opt out of this program.
The reason for my questions, just to make it easy on folks, I'm all in favor of this. I've watched the process over the last couple of years, as I sat in on the Light and Power board meetings, and I know that they have done a lot of research on this. Congratulations on a lot of research, and good luck.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to it.
The whole staff is pretty excited, so.
I got a hypothetical question for you, just maybe to help qual some concerns that people may have. So let's say I'm a patient with an implanted automated defibrillator, you know, like those pacemaker things? And let's say I'm on my porch, and I can't afford a table, so I use my power box, essentially, and it's a bad idea, to rest my drink on, and I sit there in my rocking chair by this. When I send out that signal, whatever, 20 minutes for an eighth of a second, is there any chance of that affecting my defibrillator?
I don't believe so. I can ask that question to the vendor, but let me read to you. So your question's really about the defibrillator, correct? That technology?
Because they use like what, an open source API, essentially communication. I saw something on there with regards to how it communicates in that mesh network. Is that what you were saying?
Right.
I didn't know if somehow that meter, when it sends out a signal, would have any interaction with a pacemaker. This is, not because I believe it will, but it's more or less to quality concerns that anybody may have.
I don't believe so. I don't believe one watt of power in an eighth of a second could do damage to a piece of equipment. Cell phones and microwaves and other types of equipment are releasing a greater wattage.
I wouldn't argue the logic.
Right. No, I, for clarification, I can get an answer to you. Just pose that to the vendor and put it out to the council as well.
My mom has a pacemaker, and she has a smart meter at her home, and there's no issues. All is well.
Oh, I thought you had said if you put the pacemaker on top of the meter.
No, no, those are implanted. You can't take them out.
Okay. Let's just say I was like, okay, I got you. Well, thanks, Steve. Are there any other questions from anyone? Well, if there are, just feel free to stop down at Light and Power or give the office staff a call. Be more than happy to share the presentation and print it out with anyone, or provide the data and the research that we've been giving that has gone into making our decisions, so.
Steve, is there any plan, once it's completely rolled out, to have any kind of forum or training on how people use the app? Because I think there's going to be some concern when the rates go up, because they're more accurate. And I think if they knew how to use that meter to control them, it sounds like they could take them.
We did talk about potentially gauging if there would be interest, and I was having like, not having like a meeting like this, but like a down-low meeting where we can actually go through, once there's actually meters installed, how do you set up, you know, your application or log into the platform, and what can you do with this? So if there's interest, for sure, we would be willing to do something like that. Otherwise, I think staff would be willing to sit down with people on a case-by-case basis if there isn't that interest to get everybody out of, like, a meeting. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
You looking at me?
Yeah.
Okay. Parks and Rec is the only one I had. Sounds like Jeff, your daughter, is going to do some pictures for us.
Yes.
We're looking at, put together a brochure for all the parks in town with a map, points of interest city hall, plain power, restaurants. We're hoping to have it all done by Expo next year, release it. I'm going to get with Steve later. There's been some question about the lighting in the concession area at Creekside Park, as well as a ramp to the women's restroom. So this may be something, I know you weren't with us, but it's maybe something we could look at. Naming of the North Washington property, the Scout Park, is on track. And at Creekside, there's a community garden, and a lot of the surplus that they've been growing has been going to the front. So it's working out pretty well over there. That's all I got.
I missed my two meetings, the showboat meeting and the planning commission meeting. My wife made a panic stop on the Lora Trail and fell and broke her leg. And so I, we were in surgery, and I saw, graciously, Jim's going to cover the planning commission meeting, and I'll catch up with Liz over at the chamber on the showboat committee.
I don't have any new news with the historic district commission. The next meeting will be August 23rd, 6 o'clock downstairs.
Okay. Our report didn't make, but I'll cover Ellen here. Ellen, I did attempt to attend that showboat meeting at 6 o'clock. Well, we found out it was 5 o'clock. But anyway, for the record, they didn't like my idea, so I left it. I had an idea. Oh, that's a story for another day. The planning commission, though, did meet last Monday, July 25th, and had a healthy discussion about their 2016, which is really 2017, goals and priorities. Each planning commissioner is looking at submitting their top three And at their next meeting, Ellen, you'll want to be up to date on your chapter four, and because they'll be focusing on chapter four, general provisions within the zoning ordinances, and Andy will provide definitions. I rely on him. And for the record, now I find my notes, the dog park or the dog facility, it's a bed and biscuit with 60, it's a daycare facility, as well as some care all night long and so forth for people that go on vacation, need to board their dogs someplace. And that address is 1351 Bowes Road, so there you go. And there you are.
I didn't have any meetings at all either. The DDA meeting was this Thursday.
Thursday.
And I don't, I don't know, to your knowledge, are we still having a fire board meeting?
A fire board meeting? As far as I know, we didn't have one in July, so it's my understanding that we probably will.
The other thing is that I'd like to remind everyone that the grant duty for the community fund money is coming up, or anybody is, you know, needs to go after a grant, so not to forget that if you're thinking about it. The next thing, I don't think the light and power, the light and power board has done anything with their rep yet, have you, Greg?
Perry.
Is it Perry? Okay, all right, so that's all taken care of.
Just for the record, the Arbor Board will not be meeting in August, it will be in And Dave?
Well, first, I'd like to congratulate Michael. I think he'll really get to love this community. I have, I'm just trying to think, I've been here for almost 29 years, and I love it, my family does. And the nice thing is, is the people here. I mean, there's a number of people that are sitting out in the audience, I know a good number of them, and they're terrific people, and there's more to come. So I think that, again, you'll really enjoy it, Mike. And I also wish congratulations to Impact Church for the work that they did, for their painting and just their general cleanup for a number of facilities. Just shows you what the, what the Lowell community is made of. That's all I have. Thank you. Jim, do you want to do?
Well, I thought we started with Mike. Well, sure. Welcome, my parents. Looking forward to it. Again, we stumbled in, as Dave did, we stumbled into this little town some years ago, never meant to stay, we're still here, so it's been 35 years. Great newsletter that came in my, came in my bill today. Thank you so much for the bill, as well as the newsletter. I might actually think it's the newsletter that has a bill with it. Anyway, and Susan Maxwell Stevens, Lowell City resident, does the writing, and a neighbor of mine, a good neighbor of mine, does the writing, and so congratulations on another successful addition. Next week, starting on Sunday night this week, the Kent County Youth Fair is coming to town. It will be here, and so we always look forward to some fair food, and it's lousy fair food, but it's, it tastes so good. Worst week of my life. Anyway, and if that weren't enough, Pink Girl is fast approaching, so be ready for that and start getting excited. Save your money for buying as many shirts as, as you can. And yes, we've all, I think, had communications from various city residents about the biodigester, and we are aware of what's going on there. It is being worked on, and Steve Drusilich, as well as Greg Northrop, have been very busy working at that, so we do know. We are informed, and we are concerned, and we're working on that, and I think some improvements are coming along. And if that weren't enough, lunch today is tomorrow. Please be sure to vote, and for those of you that are going to linger just a moment or two, I notice the city clerk would appreciate it if we could move and redistribute the chairs and bring out some tables, and she will tell us exactly the way she wants that done.
Congratulations, Mike, and welcome. I've been here my entire life, I didn't really have a choice, and there's never been a laugh, so. Max, the Love Week with all the work that they have, Impact Church, that was absolutely amazing, and I truly love that color down there. I'd do my house in that if I had the chance. It's really amazing what this community can do, so welcome.
Welcome, Mike. It's been a pleasure working with you, and we have such a good team growing here, and it's evidenced by all the wonderful things that our community is in the Impact Church, and they call it Love Week, and it truly is part of the philosophy of Lowell, so welcome aboard. And yeah, get out and vote, stick to the ground like Jim said, we'll move the tables and we'll get ready for the election tomorrow.
Welcome, Mike. And Steve, thank you. This biodigester thing's been going on for a while. Steve has been fantastic about getting us information, all the information and the plan for a solution. Most of the time, people leave even though there's a problem, so that's all I have.
Welcome, Mike. I had many complaints about the biodigester. Yesterday was really, really bad on Center Street. And something, we are going to have to speed that process up a little bit, because, just because they say they're doing something, the last thing they did, didn't do anything. It was, it stayed a little while, but they supposedly did their research when they build it. They promised us that it wouldn't smell, and it's been horrific, so. If you want to talk, Greg, come on out.
Well, I can say from here, Greg left early, unfortunately. He thought this was over. He was here to respond to any comments, but they are planning to add a six-foot wall to the top of that outside container, which is going to help. He had a building permit application in his hand, so there are additional steps being taken.
Okay. Thank you. And I hope everybody has fun at the fair. Food is good.
Yes.
And then remember to vote, and that's all I have tonight.
Now, is that a vote that we adjourn at 8:18?
All right, second.
On there.
Yes.